Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Thursday, July 24th, 2025 Smithfield School Committee meeting. Before we begin, if we could please stand and say a question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, emergency evacuation health notification. In case of emergency, please exit the media center to the right and proceed through the front exit doorways. There are restrooms located outside of the media center down the hall to the left. There's a public comment sign up sheet notification up there in the front. If you're going to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill that out. You don't have to do it if you're going to speak during any other agenda item. Whenever you do speak, however, please speak at the podium way up here front so that the voice is captured with everybody else. First item of the night is the -- oh, before I begin, the school committee woman, Ashley Hogan, cannot make it tonight. It's an excused absence. There's some reasons. That's why I just wanted to get that noted. Now, we'll begin. Item four, consent agenda items, approval of minutes. These are the open minutes of the June 26, 2025 school committee meeting, open minutes of the July 22, 2025 school committee meeting, and approval and ceiling of executive session minutes of June 12, 2025. We have approval of bills totaling $44,709.06, direct checks from June 25, 2025 through July 18, 2025 totaling $1,3721.98, lunch bills totaling $49,567.80, and the approval of the homeschooling, which is on the list attached in your agendas, and finally, approval of non-residents pending residency. These are students who are currently in the process of establishing or establishment of residency in the Thomas Smith. Again, there is a attached list for that. This will require a motion.
I would ask that we separate the motion. I was not here for the June 26 meeting, so I cannot.
Okay, so we are going to look for a motion for everything but item A.
Motion to approve all consent agenda items with the exception of item A.
And the second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Are there any questions on any of the items that are not item A? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Now, I'll look for a motion to be made for approval of item 4.1A, the open minutes of June 26, 2025 school committee meeting.
Motion to approve 4.1A.
Second. Okay. Motion has been made second. Any questions, comments? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Very good. Before I forget, I would like to introduce David Lee as the finance director of the first meeting. Very much. And I know David Burrows was around here somewhere in the back.
That's right.
There he is. He was the tech director as well. And of course, Mark is running the camera, usual. Great job there. Very good. Now, we'll move on to item five, discuss, review, and approve donation from the Pleasant View Elementary School PTO of $3,095 for replacement of the rubberized mat for the outdoor Gaga pit.
And we have the treasurer of the Pleasant View PTO, Deb Beck, here to answer any question, but also maybe to describe the project as well. Thank you, Deb.
So actually, it's not a replacement. What happened was last spring, Mrs. MJ, Mr. Marino approached the PTO about purchasing mats to set the school Gaga pit on. It currently sits on a patch of dirt, so the students and teachers at the end of the day come out kind of dusty. We researched different kinds of mats, and the one that we settled on has holes in it, which will allow for drainage if it rains, and if the grass chooses to grow up through it, it may. We received a quote for 40 mats that will cover 650 square feet. This will cover all of the playing area underneath the Gaga pit, and it's also going to leave space outside of the pit for other students that are watching along the perimeter. The total cost, including the shipping, is $3,095. It will need -- the Gaga pit is currently assembled. It's going to need to be taken apart so that we can rig and level the ground underneath. I don't think it's going to be that big of a project. It's just kind of where dirt has settled against the walls of the pit, so I'll just kind of button that out. The mats are going to be connected with zip ties, and then they get staked along the perimeter. Then the Gaga pit will be reassembled, and that gets staked down as it is now, and those stakes will go through the holes that are in the mat. So these mats were made in conjunction with the Gaga pit company, so we don't expect any problems. Angelo had offered to have his team install the mats for us, but the PTO is also happy to arrange for our volunteers to handle it. We're okay with that as well. The only thing that we do need for Angelo's team would be to receive them at Pleasant View and move them over to the side of the building where the Gaga pit is. Each mat weighs about 28 pounds, and there'll be 40 of them. They're going to be delivered on a semi-trailer with a lift gate, and if the committee approves this purchase, we'll order them ASAP, so you can have them in before school starts.
Awesome.
Very good. So this requires a motion. Just drop the word replacement there. Rubberized mat.
Motion to approve the donation of rubberized mats from the Pleasant View Elementary PTO.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions? Anybody want to say Gaga pit?
You're all invited to come play.
Okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's see. Item number six is to discuss, review, and approve donation of 12 laptops from Bryant University to the business and finance CTE program at Smithfield High School.
Wait. These are gently used, but certainly a high-quality computers that have been donated for the business CTE. We have expanded our partnership with Bryant University, and also Fidelity was part of this donation because we met with the Fidelity Vice President of Community Affairs, and he was able -- he knew Scott Waterman, and Bryant was looking for more of a partnership with the high school at the same time we were, so we asked if this was possible. So these high-end computers with your approval will be donated. They have a value of $4,200. Certainly, Scott is very excited to be able to get these into his program if approved.
Okay. This will require a motion.
Motion to approve donation of laptops from Bryant University.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further questions or comments? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Now, we are going to move a couple of items. We're going to move item 14 and 15 up here. They're budget-related, and then we'll get back on schedule for the rest of the -- so item 14, we'll do next, is discuss, review, and approve fiscal year '26 revised budget, which I believe you all have the handout paper. Put your handout.
Wait. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to do a highlighter overview for the audience, and my apologies, there wasn't a screen here. So this will be up on the school website under school committee presentations. It'll be up tomorrow morning, so you can take a look at it, but I am going to speak about it this evening. So I just want to give a little bit of a historical view, and then certainly we'll answer your questions. But this came about after the final budget vote of the town council in June. So in February, the school committee approved a request for -- to the town for a 3.25 increase over the fiscal year '25 budget for this coming year. This would account for certainly regular drivers, for instance, transportation costs and special education instructional programs. So 3.25 plus continuing with capital funds coming into the district, so asking for the same amount of money, $400,000. That could be used for renovations, particularly at our middle and high schools. Both the town manager and the finance review committee approved a budget increase of 2% to the operating budget. The town manager recommended $100,000 into the capital funding. The finance review committee also recommended $400,000 for capital. When the town council voted, they approved a reduced increase of the operating funds over FY '25, then the 2%. We had been preparing for the 2%, so we had made certainly some cuts. This amounted to less than a 1% increase. To be exact, it was a 0.8% increase over last fiscal year '25's budget. At the same time, they also approved $500,000 in capital funding. I just want to point out that capital funding can only be used for approved renovation projects, not school district operations, not personnel, non-instructional materials, or equipment. So just to put some numbers to this, the total fiscal year '26 budget revenue the school committee approved on June 27, '25 at a 3.25% increase would be $46,983,813. The reduction to town appropriation request to balance the town manager's recommendation of 2% required the school department to then cut $559,065 of the total budget. The further reduction by the town council to the town appropriation increase of $550,000, cut that in half to an increase of $275,000. That's the 0.8%. So we had to go back and do obviously many more cuts to a program. This does impact staffing. It does impact instruction. However, we also received towards the end of the budget process and afterwards additional state revenue has helped to offset. Our enrollment as a district increased between October and March when the two census are done, so reported to us was an additional $142,000, $142,830. So that's a significant increase in enrollment that happened between the beginning of the year and near the end, so the state provided funding for that. We expect an additional CTE revenue based on the brand-new fiscal year '26 rates. So CTEs are career technical education programs. These are for our students, but also these are programs that other students in other districts can apply to come in. They would be tuition-paying, so again, some of that funds obviously would be going into the CTE program for materials, classes, et cetera, but also we see that as a positive for going into the operational funds. At the rate with what is expected in terms of the preliminary enrollment, we expect about an additional $34,550. Third area of increase from the state was for high-cost special education. There was a change between April and June, so relatively recently. That's netting us slightly over $9,000. In addition, group home aid changed in June of 2025, so we're expecting $29,741. We have also -- we will also be offering after-school care at Old County Road School through the YMCA program at Pleasant View for before and after. We're adding Old County. The expected revenue coming into the district is about $9,000. Surprisingly, and we have Mrs. Devine here, because this does not happen, she's told me, there was an increase in the Medicaid reimbursement rates to the district. So the benefit to the district this year, one-time-only, is $100,000. So again, that is a tremendous offset. So the new revised revenue for the total budget is $46,474,972. So it's a better picture thanks to the state.
So just going down from the original figures we dealt with in February, I come to about $509,000 reduction in revenue, right? Okay. So that's the deal. When we get to the rest of this, that's what we're looking at?
Yes, I believe so. So the next -- but I do want to tell you that we still have cuts that have to be -- that still have to be made. So the high school dean of students slash CTE director, it's a $90,000 salary. That has been cut from the budget. That had to be cut towards the end to make that definitely that second cut. That I cannot restore even with the additional funds coming in, and most of it is one-time money, so talking about personnel.
How do we run a CTE program without a director of CTE?
Someone else will have to do it. A long time ago, when I was an assistant principal, that became one of my duties. However, later on in the agenda, what I'm recommending to the school committee is that we have a stipended position of about $4,000, and we do this as a teacher, if there's interest, to be able to do the accounting, the enrollment. But certainly, even with a dean and a CTE director, it really -- it is a lot that needs to be done. But definitely, this would be a position, if we have the funding, we'd like to bring back because our CTEs, as you know, are growing. Would be up to eight. We're opening culinary. We're opening pre-engineering. We're opening biomedical to join that. So this hurts. The good scenario is that it's not cutting a person. So the person who was in that position was promoted into an open assistant principal position, so was able to not fill that position, but no one lost their job. Additionally, based on need, the director of special ed is here. We were looking to add a special educator at Smithfield High School. There certainly is a need. We're really looking to have kids find a really home at the high school, be able to stay on track with credits, and not have kids go out. The other area that I know our community is really interested in, as well as I am, is our elementary map interventionists. They were eliminated in FY '25 due to the grant fund that was eliminated that paid for those two positions. So those are about $80,000 to $85,000 in salary apiece because they're higher up on the steps. Wouldn't be a new teacher. Additionally, we're looking for additional para professional supports outside of individualized education plans. So any student that has an IEP, and if there is a requirement for a para, those needs will be met. However, for additional paras that also help with construction in the classroom, a $60,000 salary, we will not be able to support those. And of course, we had proposed with the addition of the athletic complex and the needs of the buildings, particularly the high school and the middle school, and maintenance employee that was proposed. So those -- sorry, I gave you a little bit of a positive scenario. I'm going to pull it back and give you just a negative. These positions would really just help us to keep pace.
I just have one question. The additional special educator SHS, what does that leave for caseload for the special educators there?
Yeah, so the caseload's a pretty high. They're about 16 or 17 for our case manager.
So that's then having -- that's super high.
Super high.
So as we're looking at it, that's so high for one individual to take on and service their IEP caseload. That's astronomical. I wouldn't want to see that cut at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so again, these are certainly priority areas. If we can bring them back, if there is additional revenue, and we're again continuing to look at it. I'm just going to just continue a little bit before we go on to questions on another sheet. The reductions in materials and equipment. And so these cuts coming down to 0.8%, there's no way trimming everything. This affects classrooms. This impacts instruction and personnel. So some of the reductions in materials and equipment from this year's budget that we can't fund this year, Smithfield High School is moving to have an AP calculus and AP pre-calculus, and so need a textbooks for that. It's about $17,820. We are going to postpone that till next year. The current books that are there can be used. We'd like to get better books that will better match the curriculum. These are new courses. Again, it'll be in FY '27 unless things continue to unroll. That may be possible. We also -- we're looking for Smithfield High School American History digital textbooks at $30,000. Again, just upgrading our social studies program. After that, we need to upgrade world history. These are requirements. Again, very short kit, Algebra I kits. The library book reductions will hit every school except for Old County Road School, the school that we're in right now. This is a Title I school. We need more books here. We need books everywhere, but right now, we took some funding from books for each $11,500. And again, this is to meet the budget. These are not choices that I'm proud of, but it does protect people and the general instructional program. Classroom projector replacements and teacher hardware. Teacher hardware includes newer devices. Again, $41,500. We are looking -- we had to replace two computer lab at the middle school, all 50 of them because they were 10 years old, and with Windows 11, they would not run anymore. So that was an emergency purchase that we've had to do, so we put some money there, and it had to come out of another aspect of technology. In addition, just some instructional programs, so about $8,000 from GMS, a particular ELA program supplemental, some special education materials and supplies at professional development for about $13,000. The high school student assistance counselor, this is -- our share is $30,000. Tri-State pays the other 30 through a grant. We've had this program for the past three years. These are counselors that strictly deal with substance abuse issues in a confidential setting at our high school. They do manage to see -- she does manage to see quite a lot of people. We were able to receive funding through a special grant collected by the state and distributed to the town. So this is a one-time-only savings. This will come back into the budget for next year. So it's offset this year, but it'll be a cost for the next year. So again, these reductions come to a little over $111,000 for FY '26.
So is that $30,000 not included in that $100,000 number? Because you said it came back or able to?
It's -- yeah, it's -- well, I think I included it in that number.
It's not in the budget. The $30,000 is out.
Yeah.
Because it was funded from the grant.
Right. Okay, so it's not a reduction. It's keeping it. Okay.
We'll keep in service, not as far as our defense on our budget.
For next year.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's just going to be a one-time savings for this fiscal year, and then for fiscal year '26 to '27, we'll have to bring that cost back on the budget.
Yes, great. Thank you. I just have one more question. Special education materials and zip ties and professional development. So what professional development will we be losing for the $5,000?
So it was actually a conference that I wanted to attend, so it's not.
Oh, I wasn't sure.
So it was for the director.
Which is still important.
Yes, thank you. So a few additional reductions that are outside of the classroom, but certainly our district needs. We're cutting maintenance vehicle repairs by $6,000. That was a pretty easy one to do because we don't have the vehicle anymore, so we don't have to worry about the repairs. The second one is telephone service and equipment upgrades of about $4,000. So our telephones that are in our classrooms, they are about $400 to $500 apiece. They do need regular upgrades. I'd like to even bring them up more just for safety and security, trimming for technology services for operations, a little over $19,000. And we did take out of this year's budget student computers at the kindergarten level for about $40,000. So we -- the kindergarten level uses the computers the least, but even with the other two grade level, it's not enough devices. The kids are -- my feeling is, in watching them, we need to have shorter rotations of these devices, particularly at the middle and high school. And now elementary, we'd like another grade level as well. We just -- we have not been able before that for a number of years. We definitely can't afford it going into this year.
I just have one question. So does that mean kindergarten will not get any computers, or they'll be getting used computers not now?
Great question. So we were able out of FY '25 to buy used computers for kindergarten, which is good news. Some additional savings. I'm going to tell you a little bad, a little good. Life insurance adjustment. Again, these we don't typically know about based on changes in personnel. So for instance, if someone goes out and leave, if there's a mid-year hire and that person's at a lower step, we'll find out at the end of the year if there's any savings. So life insurance, about $1,600 in savings. Pension adjustments, almost $59,000. And again, going along with the bad TIAA, again with employees, about $3,200. So you all also have questions on this. Certainly, I was giving an overview. You also have this with the new budget in there, as well as an additional sheet, that you can see some of the reductions and additions. If there's any questions.
Now, the changes or the reductions we went through here on this page, on the preceding page, they've come to approximately $509,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
If everyone is made as outlined, it brings revenue and expenses in.
That's correct.
Okay. The only reason I bring that up is I know none of these are easy to swallow, but if there's something the committee feels should be in there, there's got to be a balancing reduction somewhere else.
Can we -- the $100,000 that on the last page, the request to move the $100,000 from capital to operating, is that inclusive of the numbers that we?
That's actually the next item.
That'll be the next item.
Yeah, that'll be on 15. First, we deal with the actual budget and everything, but that will be the item that we'll talk about, because that's not an automatic, and that's something we have to vote on.
Okay. If that were to be approved, does that change this number, though?
Yes, absolutely. That would change the number positively. So just -- I'm going to use just the dean as an example, just a dean. That may not be the change that's made, but with that dean slash CTE director for that position, it actually receives 15% of that salary from a grant. So again, we would be able to, let's say, use $75,000, fund that position, and then some of the instructional materials.
So can I ask why we're doing it in this order as opposed to looking at the $100,000 first?
Well, first you have to look at where we actually are with what we know. That is a hypothetical, but committee, I asked to put it on there because we want to talk about it. Whether we want to go through with it, we may not want to go through with it. But we can always vote on a budget. If we are successful, that's something that will take a month or more to find out whenever they -- I think their next meeting is early August, so maybe some way to month. And then we come back in, we do the exact same thing here, and now say, okay, there's $100,000 more in revenue, and now we apply it to where additionally. If we did it the other way around, we can't -- it's not a sure thing.
It's not.
So we can't go in and say, let's base it on $409,000. We have to base everything right now on $509,000.
Okay.
Now, I do have a question on this. I know one of the things we discussed was the various CT programs that potentially coming online, and one of them was the biomedical, and the important thing was we needed a science teacher in order to essentially backfill the science classes so that current science teachers could teach the necessary math. That's in here.
So because that is a program that's running and needed the teacher, that was -- that person was hired. So that position was funded. That stayed in the budget presentations. That program and that, yes, that program will run. Yes.
The other two programs are not adversely affected at all?
The culinary program, it will also run. In fact, with the new room being done, it's an E. In fact, with the new room being done, it's in even better shape. The pre-engineering should be on track. Some of the costs will have to come up with what's not covered in CT funding. So right now, we have promissory notes for the title funding, which is really good news. So we'll be at least, I believe, Lisa might be able to speak to this better. We'll be at least funded for like Title I and, and our CTs at the same rate. We just don't have the money yet, so it's, it's late coming in. So without that, we do need to purchase some science materials out of the general fund.
Okay, and you purchase them, but we have promissory notes to pay back when it shakes.
That's what the plan is.
Okay, so all three of those are still able to go on?
We, we have not taken them off.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Because we do have students that wanna enroll.
So, questions? I know we have questions.
What was the cost of the special, the additional special educator at SHS? That total isn't on here.
It's not, so we would look at a step, ideal solution, a step one. So the cost of a step one with benefits would be about eighty five thousand dollars.
Eighty five?
Eighty five. Is that right? Is that right?
Yeah, it, it, maybe, maybe ninety, maybe ninety, yeah.
Maybe ninety, ninety.
Depending on, depending on the benefits that they take away.
Sure. And when you were reviewing, and I know this is not easy in none of these, were there any alternates that, or additional scenarios that you worked through that could be a different option than cutting any of these positions?
The issue with the positions is those are the costs that'll continue to go up. So if, and again, not knowing what the benefit would, would be, they had been in, certainly my wish list of items of wanting to do that, it's not that we can't, for instance, trade, you can trade one for the other. It's just when we know it's finite, it's sometimes, not a great reason, but it's sometimes easier to get the materials, get those into the classrooms. We know what the cost is, it's not gonna be a cost that's rising. And then in another year, if we are nearly level funding again, I, we would be in the decision, unenviable, of letting some of these folks go that we bring in.
And one more question. You had mentioned that the history books and there was another one that you mentioned that were required to be updated at one point. Do you know when the requirement was into effect, or is, is there a date on that?
So with the, with the, with the new AP Calculus books, that was the question. Because that actually, that request came in after the budget process. It was late coming in, that, you know, those designations was certainly, it was a great change to make. So I did have them call College Board to see if the materials that are currently there would meet the minimum requirements for that class, so they will.
That was calculus? I thought it was history and something else that you said that they needed to be upgraded to meet the requirements. I assume we just?
Uh, the, oh, sorry, the, the, yes, so the AP Calculus, we, we'll need those within a year. We're starting these American History digital textbooks. Yes, this updates, certainly updates our materials. We, we have supplemental, because they have been updated. We've been slowly but surely, starting at the middle school, updating social studies.
So they will need to be updated next year initially?
So we're gonna look, yeah, we'll, we'll be able to do.
FY twenty five.
Twenty five. So, we were able to capture some funding, is what I was looking for, if that was done, and purchase those out of FY twenty five. So those will be coming online. So what we tried to do was, again, it's budget changes, as you all know. So we tried to have those one-time funds, if we had any, let's say if money came out, someone took a leave, we ended up having more money than what we thought at the end. We had a certain timeline to take a look at our lists. So we asked a really good question, do we continually update it constantly? We were always, right, Melissa, we all, always huddled, looking at if money, here's what the priorities are.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a little bit.
Yeah, just a quick question. The proposed stipend positions that are gonna be voted on later, are those reflected in the budget currently, the revised budget?
They're not, but we think they can be, they could be covered, because they're smaller, they're smaller costs. What they would do is keep the programs that are coming. One, I am pulling the Director of Guidance position, I asked the chair to pull that off. But to make sure that the CTE has somebody there that could be just dedicated to ensuring the assessments are done, enrollment. I've, I'm recommending that, so yes, we can cover, we thoroughly can cover that in FY twenty six.
That would be in Perkins. The, the CTE position would be in Perkins.
Right, so if the money is released, when the money is released?
When the money is released.
Because as I said, the fifteen percent of the dean was covered through the grant. Saying we get that, that was what the hope was. That position will not affect general funds, so apologies. Thank you for clarifying.
Gotcha, thank you. Any other questions? So, what we have here is, is the revised budget as it stands right now. We should, in my opinion, vote and approve this. Then we will move on to the other item, which we will discuss and, or not. Changes can always be made to the budget, but we do have to present a balanced budget within about thirty days. I know normal in the middle of the year, once you know you have a deficit, you have thirty days to correct it. We're not in the middle of the year, we're beginning of the year. So I don't know if that thirty days starts July first or not. Bottom line is, we won't have another chance to actually put this in effect until August. So we should vote on a budget right now. Discuss the next, I know that we can always, if either money comes in or not, we can always make adjustments to it. That's all, did you have a question?
I just think it's hard to vote on it when we don't have other options. You know, like I, I, the budget's fine, you know, we have to make cuts somewhere, but sixteen to seventeen caseload for our special education caseload comes with hours and hours of work on that one teacher. It's not a fair option when the other special education teachers in our district have a much less caseload. Special educators, it, it's twenty-four seven work. It also leaves our school up for potential legalities if these students aren't receiving the best person to manage our caseload and aren't being overworked. So that's why I'm very concerned with that. I would have loved to see, you know, more options where we can kinda, as a committee, mix and match what we feel could, you know, work. So I don't know how to vote on this, but I can't vote on it without that position.
Okay, well, that's what I was saying earlier, that if you feel that strongly, you either have to say, come up with another area to cut ninety, I have eighty-five to ninety here for that position. Or, we vote on it now, it is balanced, it meets the requirements. We then wait and see what happens. And you can always adjust, you can always talk about a budget at any particular time in a year and make adjustments.
It's just hard for me to sit and cut that money when I don't know like other options. You know, it's, and I don't, it's just one.
If, if I can just jump in on this, 'cause I, I hear your point. Right now, none of those positions are in there because they're, that point eight, that point eight percent doesn't allow for any. So we're, you're really doing a bare bones budget of what we can do to run the school district, staying compliant. When if we come in and it becomes that either there's more money that comes in, something else shakes out, then, then we have the options. And it might be that the special educator trumps the dean of students when we take a look at that. But all your vote out, because none of that is in your current budget. And there would be nothing at this point that I could cut that could add an additional teacher, just with, with the funding. So it's not, believe me, it's not a choice. It just can't be in here. We just don't have the funding.
Was this caseload the same last year?
So it was the same, and I have to say it's very similar. At the, at the middle school level, there are like fifteen or sixteen students. The difference in schedules, the middle school students are on a team, special educators on a team. There's team, meaning, there's more communication. It's, it's challenging at the high school with the number of different classes and.
Right, schedule will be a nightmare.
Schedules are, are a nightmare. But it was similar last year as well, and, you know, it's always, I think, on our wish list. We are able to meet that IEP time, so students are getting, you know, the services that are required. But you're right, it, it's, it's a scheduling nightmare, and it's, it's a high, heavy caseload for each one. There are a lot of hours in, in trying to make it work. And some students do need a little over and above. And so it's a constantly flexing, you know, who can help with this and who can help with, you know, this. So, an additional special educator would be nice, but it, at this point, with budget, it's on the wish list. You know, I think it's high priority on the wish list. But we are, we're not in non-compliance, you know, given the time.
Right, right, and yeah, I wasn't insinuating, I was just insinuating, you know, when somebody's overworked, it's not that we're on, on compliance, we're not getting them at their best.
Right, and we wanna retain our stuff, right? So we want, so, I get, yes.
So, for the questions, comments, or whatever, we have to act on this. We discuss, not only do we act.
Motion to approve fiscal year twenty six revised budget.
Second, second motion made, second. Further questions, comments?
I think we've all expressed our displeasure, which really roots, unfortunately, at the town council level, and their lack of understanding of how much disfunding was needed. I don't think anybody's happy with any of this, but we'll have further discussions, hopefully, within the next few weeks on things that we can.
And I assume we are still making attempts to find whatever grants we can. I'm, I'm hearing promissory notes to basically fund things at last year's level. If something comes in higher than last year's level by some miracle, that money now goes into pool and whatever.
That's exactly right. So there is, you know, there is still that possibility, as you know, during the year, changes can happen depending on, usually with staffing, that's our biggest cost. So if there's a change, it does, can free up funds. But yes, the special educator and the dean, that would be high priority if we can go to people. I just, I wanna make sure we can afford the person, we stay compliant, and that it's not, we can only do this for one year, and then we have to let the person go.
Now, and one last question for me, and that is, in terms of staffing at the teacher and paraprofessional level, et cetera, are we, do we have everybody that we have planned on right now, assigned on, right?
We still have some vacancies, some paraprofessional vacancies. So we have two paraprofessional vacancies at the high school. We have two preschool vacancies at this point, and one vacant, nope, the position that doesn't be was filled this week.
Okay. So I'm guessing in the, in that, from a budgetary standpoint, they're in there. The, there could be changes if somebody only needed like a, a, a individual plan versus a family plan or whatever. So there are some small savings.
Excellent point. So right now, everyone's doing their benefits, so all of the new folks coming in, so that certainly can change things. But happy to employ all of our teachers and all of our administrators in.
Gotcha. Okay, if there's no further question, take a vote. Home favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, against? Okay, so then, we'll move on now to fifteen. And in your packet, it's fifteen, reads, discuss your going to approve request to the town council to transfer a hundred thousand from the Smithfield capital fund that our school district operating fund. And I requested this with the thinking, and I'll just tell you the basic thought process on this. When the, this whole budget started back in January, this year, somewhere there, we as a school committee asked for four hundred thousand dollars. That was what we asked for. We got five hundred thousand dollars, miracle, miracle. Now, believe me, we could use five million dollars. I'm not downplaying this, we could use a lot of money to fix these schools. But, since our request was for four hundred thousand, my thinking is to ask the town council, and this is only asking, the power's a hundred percent in their, their hands, to move that, a hundred thousand of that, bring us to what we asked for, put it in the operating budget. That would then allow us to at least, some of these questions we just talked about over here, it would at least allow some funds to address one or two or whatever, depending on that. Now, first of all, it's not a guarantee. Second of all, it could backfire. They could take it and not give us anything. Okay? I mean, it is technically close to revenue neutral.
They could take the money?
They could just, yeah, they could, no, we're not gonna transfer, we're just not, we're gonna back it out. They could potentially do that.
They could vote.
They could, to vote, yeah, it would have to be a vote, yeah, that's, yeah. Right, as it stands, we're now within five hundred dollar range.
Do you think it'd be beneficial to go to them with what we're asking this money to be transferred for, rather than just, we transfer this money with no explanation?
Well, I, I, they know that when it goes to the operating budget, they, that it's a hundred percent in the control of the school department. Okay, that, I mean, they know that, that's standard, that's in law, that's in everything. And when, when this would be presented, we would say, we would probably go right to this list, right here, and say, here are two or three positions.
So this way, it gives them, you know, I feel like.
Gives them an idea, but again.
I feel like they put extra money in there, knowing that they have control over it. So if we go to them saying, under the, you know, stipulation, that'll be one of these areas, at least, maybe they'll feel a little more.
I, I mean, I think since it was presented to us, that I'm looking right there, and I'm just, I'll just take the top three D, okay? You got dean of students, you got additional special ed, you got elementary in math interventionist, okay?
So, yeah, if it's presented that way, I feel like it might be more.
An argument can be made for any of those three, but there they have to be.
And if it's presented in that way, I feel like, you know, it's more put in front of them, and it'll make them feel a little more warm and fuzzy about it, you know what I mean?
I, I don't share your.
But it could, it could just to say, you know, to be more transparent of why we're asking.
Optimism. But, I, I don't disagree with the, with the way we should approach it. Okay, so, so that's what this motion, if, if you so, proceed, wanna do this, that's basically what we're asking for.
Motion to approve the request to town council to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from the capital fund to the operating fund?
Second.
Okay, motion made, second. Further questions? It's just a letter, basically, and put it on the agenda, then we talk about it. They don't put it on the agenda, we don't talk about it. So, okay, no further questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against, nay, the ayes have it. All right, now we're gonna get back on to the regular agenda. Seven, school building committee update.
She gets excited, thinking around sixteen, wow, no such one.
Yeah, we, we skipped everything, back to the future. So we'll do item number seven, the school building committee update, the, I'll, I'll give a thing, we have other people, you know, Patrick was here, he's gonna do something, something later on, but for further details. The culinary room is almost completed. I know we have some painting to do, and I think the, the fire suppression system might need to be hooked up, and these type of things will happen any day. So that's really proceeding really well. It's passed the, you know, we're at the point where the successful, the substantial completion is done. The ISE room, we'll be talking about one thing later on this, it's just an adjustment. But that's proceeding well, as, as well. They have, you know, they've got drywall up, I think they started painting, and they, they have a few other items in there. And we will be discussing part of that later on. The, the phase two part of the project, this kinda gets lost, we've been spending all this time on the emergency thing. Phase two is the itemization of all projects for a period of time that we believe are going to be needed. And that's a more in-depth look at various things, not counting these two projects. That is, SLAM architects are hoping to have that done at the end of this month. The reason I bring this up is we have till the fifteenth to get it into the state. Obviously, we don't wanna do it on the fourteenth at, you know, eleven fifty-nine. So what'll probably set up is we will have it set up so that the building committee will be able to look at it and approve it first week of September, maybe late August, depending if they're done. Then the school committee can take care of it at hopefully our next meeting. After we have a special meeting. And then the town council, most likely, will have to have a special meeting, because they don't have another meeting until after the fifteenth, okay? Their meeting in August, it's early August, so if, like, August fourth, it won't be done then. So, that's kinda where that's at, okay? So we're gonna try to do everything we can to get that in, in order. And then things will calm down, because that, once we get it to the state, the state looks it over, will probably come back with questions for us or whatever. And hopefully, the final thing gets approved and everything in mid-December. So we got a period, we can kinda, I don't say put the brakes on, but we could slow down and not have to worry about all these last one of things, so. Patrick, do you wanna come up and add anything that I missed?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Patrick Redwood, I'm with Callie, the project leaders, the OPM for the two emergency projects and the stage two for the RIDE SBA program. So, kinda piggybacking off of what Richard said, the CTE room, that project is ninety-five percent complete. We have one item left to do, and that is putting the epoxy floor down. That is scheduled for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Friday next week. Woohoo!
Next week is what you're gonna have, you're creating a.
Pretty sure that's a music standard.
Keep the hand up. So, that will be complete as of Friday next week in all. So, that will be complete as of Friday next week in all aspects. The, there's some, there were some components of that project, or the development of that room over the summer, that Smithfield Public Schools Facilities Team took on. The painting of the room is completed, the anseled system, which was part of the project, those are all installed, as well as the vent hoods that are installed as well. Fun little effect with those vent hoods. We didn't actually know about this feature when Angelo and I were looking at them, but they're, they're hands-free. So now all of the culinary students can actually use their hands in front of this device to wave them on and wave them off, and it's a pretty, pretty neat technology, so.
That would be fun for the rest of the days of class, right?
It's just fun, twenty-first century inadvertent frills, right? So, the rest of the appliances will be going in once the epoxy floor is down, and all of that is proceeding as we expect. So, that is good, and it is, it's good to see that. I also have a slideshow update that I can provide to the school committee chair, and he can disperse that amongst y'all, with kind of photos showing that room and its current state as of yesterday. For the ISE Room, that is progressing very well. The contractor for that red oak remodeling has done an excellent job. They have been very, very diligent in their work, and have hired good subcontractors who have performed good work. So we are currently working on flooring in those rooms. Painting is done, walls are up. We have, basically the big items we've got left are some flooring, some doors, and the millwork and plumbing fixtures themselves. All the roughing is completed. So things are moving along nicely, and the contractor's also working well with the facilities team to ensure that we can make ready whichever spaces we possibly can as soon as we can, so that Angelo can move those items, or move items from the ISE program into those spaces, get IT into the space that they're gonna be in. And we're always glad to see partners that work well with school districts and the needs of facilities too. So that is always a, a good thing to see. For the Stage Two, Richard is exactly on, on the dot here. So we, in order to get all the approvals that we need, we have put in a special request, or we put in a request with town manager to hold a special town council meeting, that will be currently targeted the second week of August, which will go as the first week of August to get the approvals from the SBC and from y'all. And the Stage Two is scheduled to be completed at the end of August. So, on Monday, at the SBC meeting, Slam Architecture will be talking about scheduling, will be talking with the SBC to schedule some updates, and we will coincide those updates with the school committee as well for kind of stages, or the status of the schematic drawings for the various projects that we're looking at, those sorts of things, as the month of August progresses. We will also figure out what method is appropriate for dispersment of updates, if those updates can be provided at meetings, or they're more timely to be provided in between meetings. As well, we are, as Slam is progressing rapidly with these drawings and with the Stage Two document itself, which comprises what will probably be a thousand or so pages. So it's a lot of information, a lot of demographics, a lot of studies, but this will set Smithfield Public Schools up for the next five years for your capital fund. It is a right requirement to have those in place to receive the housing aid reimbursement funding, which Smithfield currently targets at thirty-five percent.
Just one thing, you said this town council meeting is second week of August, you meant second week of September, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, good, just on, make sure I wasn't losing video, thank you.
Correct. The other thing I wanted to mention was that for the CTE program, all of that, the paperwork to RIDE has been completed and submitted to RIDE, and we were, we're actually able to capture an additional five percent. So, we submitted for forty percent reimbursement instead of thirty-five, capturing the one, or one of two permanent bonuses that RIDE offers moving forward, now that all of the rest of the bonuses are expired as of this year. And so it's the health and safety bonus of additional five percent, which this was the health and safety project, so it fit right in.
When was that as of, was that after, that wasn't discussed on?
Correct, that was as we were filling out paperwork and speaking with RIDE, we realized, hey, this is something we can do, and we just did. So we figured that nobody would balk at some extra, extra money coming back from the safety.
What's the, they could just turn this down.
Make it trite immediately on Monday.
You did not. So I believe that, that captures the updates from the School Building Committee and kind of general state of the projects.
And we're heading into a few items here, so you might as well get comfortable, okay? At the fabulous podium you have there, so. We'll go right into, are there any further questions? Because the next three all have to do a tour, whatever, have to do with this, so probably get more things here. Item eight, Discuss review and approve Slam Stage Two design not to exceed three thousand nine hundred ten dollars. This is for, and we really had to put all this stuff on here to be careful and make sure we had everything taken care of. So you're gonna be voting on something else later that actually contains this in there, but this is to earmark this, so that they could get themselves the drawings going very fast, okay? For the, for the I, I S E, I think, put in the initial. So, if you need a further explanation, this is, this is the architect's drawing, design draft. You gonna need any further explanation?
Architectural drawing, oh, excuse me.
For the, the change that we're making, which has to do with getting rid of the greenhouse and putting a wall in place, that's gonna be a permanent wall, not a temporary wall, not an interior wall. It's gonna, we have an interior wall now, it's gonna be an exterior, et cetera, right there. So this is the architectural drawing part of it. Later on, they'll be giving you actually a better explanation of the entire project. So, motion would be in order.
Motion to approve Slam Stage Two design not to exceed three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against, nay, the ayes have it. Now we'll move into nine, Discuss review and approve Slam architectural invoice, number one zero three three seven zero five, not to exceed eight thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty cents. These are, this is an invoice for their overall work in the project, and we do have these broken down so that they're able to give us how much goes to the CTE Room, which is one project, the Culinary Room, student room, and how much goes to the ISE, okay? So this is for Slam's invoice for their actual work for things that have been going on so far. So this will also require, any motion?
Motion to approve Slam invoice one zero three three seven oh five, not to exceed eight thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty cents?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further questions on this? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against, nay, the ayes have it. Now we have Discuss review and approve Collier's invoice, number one zero six eight nine four four, not to exceed fourteen thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and ten cents. This is similar to the Slam one, and this is their services for the two projects up to this point. Again, we have them broken down so that it fits nice and neat in the accounting, et cetera, for how much is for the culinary and how much is for the ISE.
Motion to approve Collier's invoice one zero six eight nine four four, not to exceed fourteen thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and ten cents?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against, nay? Okay, Discuss, eleven, Discuss review and approve Change Order Number One, alternate number two for the RIDE SBA emergency project at the SHS ISE Room, not to exceed twenty-eight thousand for VCT flooring replacement, as submitted by Collier's project leaders. And I will have Patrick explain this. I mean, I know what it is, but he can answer your questions, which I will.
So this was alternate number two in the base bid that we submitted, or that, that was bid on. Though, we present alternates, just as a reminder for folks who are not always in construction, we present alternates to lock in prices upfront, so that way they can bid on something, and we kind of get a menu pricing selection, when, so that we can determine whether or not it's needed, and whether or not the body wants to extend the funds, to do that particular part of, of the work or of the scope. So this is specifically for replacement of all VCT flooring within the ISE Room, and replacing that with VC, new VCT flooring. This was not an abatement requirement, which was great, so we didn't have any friable or asbestos-based products in that room. So that was, that was very helpful in determining this price. And then we'll also be applying a, I believe it's a linoleum or LVT-based material sheet good, that's a monolithic flooring in the bathroom, so that facilities can maintain that better with bleach and cleaning, all that sort of stuff. So it's all the same, all in the same lump sum.
Okay, this will, any motion?
Motion to approve Change Order Number One, alternate two, not to exceed twenty-eight thousand?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against, nay? Okay, that's easy stuff. Now we get into twelve. Here's, here's where we get into some of the explanation, if you want to know this is what. Discuss review and approve the reallocation of alternate number one funds not to exceed forty thousand dollars, originally designated for greenhouse demolition, to instead support the revised scope of work. Removal or modification of existing wall between the ISE Room and the greenhouse, replacement of the existing noncompliant door with an ADA compliant door. Again.
Excellent. So this was another alternate that we included in the, in the base data, the bidding process. It was kind of a last one to add to the bid process, where we went, why don't we see what the cost is gonna be to demo this greenhouse that is really not usable, doesn't have an exit, and ISE doesn't really have a use for it, they'd rather have access to the courtyard. And so we just had all the bidders throw a number at this, so that we could lock it in upfront and not have to worry about, you know, figuring out whether a price was good or not after the fact. So, what we realized through that process was that the wall between the IS, what is now the ISE Room and the greenhouse is actually an interior wall. It is interior in its construction and its insulation, with the materials on the outside of the building is not designed to be exposed to the elements for a long period of time, as it was. And that was in nineteen sixty, what, right? Nineteen sixty-six. So, the approach here is to take, there's some problem solving that happened at the town and school level to figure out, how do we, how do we go about this? And the DPW has offered to redirect some of their labor to do the demolition of the greenhouse and removal of the slab that is integral to the building when the building was originally built, so that that space can then have a ramp or some access point installed for access to the courtyard. So that takes the expenditure of those funds from being, having to be extended by this project to being absorbed by the labor of the town, which is an actually very helpful thing, because that allows us to take this forty thousand dollars and see, is there a way that we can address this wall? So, and in doing that examination, what we determined was removal of that wall that is not structural would allow for us to rebuild a current and code compliant wall that is designed for exterior exposure. And this would also replace the door, which is currently not ADA accessible, and would replace it with an ADA accessible door. So, in going through this exercise, what we determined is that we could do this for the under forty thousand dollar amount. There are some other considerations for the ramp and access points that we're gonna try and help the town run or the school run in tandem. But to do the ramp the way that we needed to, we ran into some material considerations with the fire department that didn't allow us to do what we wanted to do, that would have fit within what we were hoping the budget could be. So, what that leaves us with is a greenhouse that is being taken care of by DT, DPW. It leaves us with a ramp that we need to address, but it gives us an exterior wall to the building. And that we can do as part of Red Oak's construction. So, that pricing, the budgetary pricing had been received, that's what kind of drove this, is going, hey, we can do this, it's under the forty thousand. And then we can do that also with the ad service for Slam Architects to do the design and contract administration for that. Design is actually the drawing and developing of the documents, their stamp, all that stuff. And then the contract administration piece is things like punch lists, outside blocks, those sorts of things. It's a time piece, and it's always less than the design portion. So, that is what this reallocation is. So it's basically saying, we wanna take this forty thousand dollars, it was reserved for a very specific scope, and we wanna reallocate it to another specific scope, knowing that there is a method to address part of the exterior piece. During this wall construction, we have two contingencies, or we have a contingency plan. Should we not be able to find a ramp solution in time for school to start, that wall, or that wall and that door is not a path of egress for the fire department. There are plenty of other paths of egress and capacity for those egress points. And so should we need to make that door non-functional for a time while we're addressing the ramp outside, we can do that. But this prepares that space to be able to allow the ISE Room to directly access the courtyard to outdoor spaces, which is just good for the students to stand. So that is what all of this is. So, right now, this specific modification is for the reallocation of those funds to construct that exterior wall.
And this is, the thirty-nine hundred for Slam is also in this, okay? They aren't gonna get paid twice. The reason they were broken out was one, is we could actually show it and get the work order going faster. And this whole process, we originally wanted to address the ramp at the same time, if we could. And we thought another twenty thousand, bringing forty up to, you know, sixty potentially, could do it. But as Patrick mentioned here, with the ramp, it wasn't simple, you know? Concrete was super expensive, they had, I guess, for, what do you call it?
Tread material.
Tread, but they also before that, you had the, what, pressure treated, which didn't meet building code type things. I mean, it met building code, but it didn't meet the, having to be good for twenty plus, twenty-five years, whatever it is. The tread had ran into some fire problems and all that, so we can potentially do a steel, I think. It was a lot of things, it was too many moving parts. Let's get this done, this will get the room done, the door will be blocked off, but it's there for when we, we address that future issue, okay? So that's where we're at right now. And also, by voting on this the way we have it, it meets exactly what both the building committee and the town council voted on, and we don't have a hullabaloo about that whole issue.
And can I just add to that, that by breaking it up like this, our goal is, as part of the building committee, to get the ramp in there as soon as possible, and it allows Angelo to do research and start to source potentially purchasing it from a company that supplies bleachers, things like that. So we're not delaying that ramp, we're trying to move as quickly as we can with that as well, but it allows us to move forward without delaying the ride process and.
And then the ramp can be added without any, like, the kids can still be in the room?
Okay.
Oh, yes, yes, definitely.
Addressing this wall now makes, makes sure that it's done before school starts, which would disturb the students if, or would relocate the classroom, right? If we had to do it during the school year. Tackling the ramp during the school year, a little bit easier of a, of a job, especially since the solution.
From the courtyard, and, okay, perfect.
But the fact that the base is gone and the greenhouse is gone makes it real.
And the door's there for when it's able to, and nobody, nobody will be out in the courtyard if not every kid can go out there, right?
But that's that. Yes. The, the finished product of the new exterior wall for the courtyard and the door, that will all be structurally ready for ramp? Like, there's not gonna be any, any hangups moving forward? It's all gonna be ready to go? Is the hangup for the, for the metal ramp just cost at this point, or?
So the, the ramp solution, we need to, we need to dive into more, and that's gonna take a little bit of time, because we don't know how much time that's gonna take. We need to release Red Oak as soon as possible to get this wall done. They're already up against the wire, right, by adding the scope of work on. So, we're separating them out, intending to run them in tandem, but if one is gonna lag behind, it should be the ramp, not the wall.
Understood.
Is there any ramp to their courtyard at all?
Yes.
Yes, from the cafeteria.
Okay, okay.
Yes, a big group around.
You can get lost on, follow the yellow bit road, it goes down like a, yes. This'll be much simpler. Any further questions on this? If not, motion is in order.
Motion to approve alternate one not to exceed forty thousand dollars?
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded.
If I may, real quick.
Yes, you may.
Can we specify that this is also part of Change Order One? So that we're gonna do this as a bundled change order?
Okay, so what, in this, in this motion, what do you want us to add exactly?
So, it would be Discuss, Review and Approve, the reallocation of alternate one funds to be included in, or not to exceed forty thousand dollars to be included in Change Order One.
Included in Change Order One.
I will restate that I make a motion to approve alternate number one funds not to exceed forty thousand to be inclusive of the Change Order.
There's a little blank, you second that, right? Okay, fine, so now we are on board. If there are no further questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against, nay, the ayes have it. Now, the building committee, the school committee, and town council have approved the same thing. So, we get a little bit of peace until the next problem. Okay, thank you very much, Patrick. We'll now move up to item thirteen, Discuss, Review, Approve, Authorizing Superintendent to authorize change orders or additions to the Smithfield High School emergency project up to ten thousand dollars. This is because of exactly things like we just went through here, so that if we had this and we were up against something where we needed a, somebody wouldn't provide their services unless they knew they were getting paid, the superintendent would be able to approve it. It's still coming back to us, but the superintendent would be able to give the approval, and then they'd get their work order or whatever, they'd get there.
If I may also add.
Sure.
As part of the original budget for these projects, we included a owner contingency. That is an amount of money that the owner holds to the side, that we don't disclose to the contractor. This allows us to make changes rather rapidly when we need to. This allows us to make changes rather rapidly when we need to. Um, in both cases, uh, it was twenty, or ten or fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah, and twenty thousand dollars. That, moving that money from there to a contract is a change order. So by how, holding that contingency, we're really holding money right now in the budget that we can't utilize without going back to town council anyways. So, uh, authorizing this allows us to utilize, in both cases, at least some of that owner contingency rapidly when we need to. If that makes sense.
That's what this is here.
Motion to approve authorizing superintendent to authorize change orders or additions to the S H S emergency projects up to and not exceeding ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Okay, we've already done fourteen and fifteen, so we are going to move over to sixteen. Uh, discuss, review, and approve memorandum agreement for the technology and equipment fund grant, which superintendent will, uh, talk about, and I am then definitely passing it on.
So, yes, so this will require your signature. We talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, but, um, we have, uh, received a grant or promise of a grant through the Twenty-First Century Technology and Education Fund. This is an S B A, um, fund account in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. It requires for us to be able to access it. It does require the school committee, myself, to sign that you are approving that we received the seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, what this pays for, because this is how the grant was written, and certainly we tried to get more money, but we're very happy with seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, this will provide equipment, uh, that we would not have been able to afford in a four borough science rooms. That includes auditory equipment, um, microphones, um, and speakers for special education students to be in any four of those. In addition, it provides, uh, forty iPads to be used at the elementary, each of the elementary schools will receive those bundles of those. That will add to what they have, actually will exceed what they have, uh, to be used. For instance, uh, they can be checked out, but they will be through that STEM program running through our librarians. So it's an enrichment, uh, project. Um, in addition, this will also, uh, pay for, um, uh, elec- electrical adjustments or potentially a little bit more than the, uh, to be able to, to, um, power some large panels that could be used in, for instance, the C T E biomedical room where students can actually see, um, uh, dissections occurring. They can also, um, use those as, um, as training modules. So it will prove, um, speakers and microphones at the high school. Um, several panel, uh, interactive panels, the electrical enhancements that need that, for that to happen, and the forty iPads that'll go to the elementary schools, and that does come to, based on our quotes, um, as well as, uh, several all-in-one computers that will also go to the high school. That comes to seventy-five thousand dollars. So it's equipment we would not be able to purchase.
Motion to approve memorandum of agreement for the technology and equipment fund grant. Second.
Motion made in second. Any further questions? You will be getting a form to sign here in a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Uh, we are scratching number seventeen for the time being. That's not number one, we're gonna work eighteen.
Right, so as proof of the nation.
Eighteen is discuss, review, and approve template for a stipend for S H S C T E liaison.
Thank you. Um, this would take the place, assuming that we will not be going forward with the director of C T. This allows for this template for us to have that extra, um, it's not an extra duty, but it's an extra position, uh, to pay for about four thousand dollars. It would be, as Lisa said, covered out of the grant fund. The same one that would have paid fifteen percent of the dean would cover the total cost of four thousand dollars for someone to ensure that, uh, the accounting is being done to assist in the sentinel showcase for the visitation. So that we have, uh, we have eight, uh, very robust C T programs that are coming online to be able to adequately, um, enroll students into them, both our own and others, and also to, um, there are assessments, so to be able to earn, uh, full credit at the end of a three-sequence course. Students do take an assessment, so ensuring that that accountability is in place.
Okay. On to the very motion.
I have a question, I do.
Sure.
Um, so my concern with this is, are you looking to move forward with this quickly when we just, you know, we, we haven't settled exactly what we're doing with the C T E position just yet? So, my thought is, are you concerned that you wanna, like, be able to apply this stipend right away to make sure we have somebody set up for C T E? Because just thinking, you know, off the cuff, my gut tells me to delay this until we figure out what we're doing with the budget before we assign four thousand as a stipend to a teacher.
Sure, so what this would be, so two different warning could be. This could be a, anticipated based on budget. So, in other words, it generate, but also closer to, so just the template would be approved, so closer to coming back. But it, it would be something that someone would have to, at the high school level ideally, want to have. So, if we would not, for instance, go forward with this, if the dean position, C T E director was known, we would not be doing both. So the wording that would go out is if this is funded by the budget. Um, I have already spoken with, uh, the union leadership about this particular position, this potential posting, if we have to, um, not go forward with the C T E director, dean.
Any background about how we came to four thousand as the recommendation?
Uh, very basically, um, and, and it is probably a low-ball number. I did look at all of the stipends for similar type positions, uh, e-school newspaper, uh, class advisors, et cetera. So that fits into what that is. It's not higher than, um, what those stipended positions are.
I'd be concerned. I think the position, I, I can't say I'm an expert in either of them, but I would think that this position, it does a significant amount of work compared to, say, you know, the, the yearbook advisor or the newspaper advisor, just using some of the examples you gave. I, I just know how much work has gone into this program, and I'm concerned that that's low if we aren't able to fill the C T E position, that this isn't putting enough of a resource towards that programming that we've worked so hard to build and needs to be maintained.
You're absolutely right. So this will not take the place of what we had with the dean or what we were able to do beforehand, and that was to fund several class. So prior to that, we had a teacher, and we had two periods off to be able to do this, and then we had a backfill with a different teacher. This can't be the primary position, so if the primary positions have to be with the school administration, this is being able to have that third person that will have some of the strategy so that we have either the accounting, the assistants at the showcase sentinels. But you're right, for an additional assignment, they could not possibly run the whole program. But in, in best-case scenario, even at the position of the dean, C T E director, that was a split position, it really needed to be all of the administrators doing that. So as we grow bigger, this is a, kind of a stopgap to make sure, um, we've got somebody that can, it's not gonna be an administrator doing certain roles. We have someone that's able to communicate with the business department, so the accounting portion, and that's how we get our reimbursements get done.
Thank you.
Motion is in. Ready for a motion?
Motion, oh, sorry. Motion to approve template for a stipend for S H S C T E liaison.
May I second?
Second.
A motion made in second. Further questions, comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Uh, nineteen, discuss, review, and approve mentorship stipend for controller during the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Thank you. Through, throughout the past couple of years, um, certainly when we have new people come on, we do have, um, it is ideal to have mentors in place. Um, we're very fortunate in having David Lee join us as the finance director, and of course, right now, we're still, um, finalizing with your approval, the, the F Y twenty-six budget. We will very shortly be starting the F Y twenty-seven, uh, budget process, as you know, and, and starting that process, um, by late fall. Um, our controller, uh, is an ex- is extremely, um, experienced, um, has volunteered to put in additional hours, um, to work with David. They have excellent collegiality, both are in agreement that this would be really helpful to keep us up to speed in terms of the business department. Yes, there is funding that would be able to cover, uh, this. Um, so again, with the budget being so tight, wrapping up last year's with the cuts, moving forward, um, with next year's budget, certainly making sure our finance directors have the much support as possible is really, um, important. In addition, our controller certainly may retire at the end of the year, so again, having, um, the knowledge and keeping these mentorships is really important.
Motion to approve mentorship stipend for controller for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Second.
Motion made in second. Further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item twenty, discuss, review, and approve accepting the Cituit Public Schools into the Northwest Consortium of Superintendents beginning during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Thank you. So, um, as you know, we are part of a consortium of superintendents, that we ideally will share resources, knowledge, um, but one, in terms of finances, what we do is we cap C T E tuition. So, our audience may or may not know this, but when we, when students leave our district, they pay whatever the tuition is assigned to the other schools, so those are loss of money. So that can range up to nineteen thousand dollars. Um, in this case, we have all agreed that we would cap ours at five thousand total cost. Uh, so that certainly is a huge savings for us if we were to have students go to any of these schools, as well as for them coming in. Cituit has asked to join, so that everyone knows the Northwest Consortium has grown over the past three years. So it is Smithfield Public Schools, North Providence joined last year through a vote, Lincoln, North Smithfield, Cumberland, and Burrville. So Cituit would join, um, those, and again, would be agreeing to their cap. Their school committee voted to ask to join. A majority of these have to have the school committee approve, um, and allow them to come in.
I just have one question. So I know we currently have two students from Cituit here. Does that finances start next year, or do we now lose that money?
Great question. So, um, and for instance, we had a North Providence student who was already in the program. So they keep, and they stay at the same rate that they used to pay. So this would be after the majority, so it would start for this new year, anyone new coming in.
Anyone new, okay. So we're not gonna see.
Okay. Will we go on a motion?
Motion to approve accepting Cituit into the Northwest Consortium of Superintendents. Second.
Motion made in second. Further questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item twenty-one, first reading of the district's dress code policy, J I C A. And you should have in front of you two documents, a draft and, I believe, the current code.
So again, between the last meeting and this one, and with vacations, conferences, et cetera, there was not a lot of time. So we tried to elicit some, uh, comments, particularly from the high school, um, teachers. The comments, uh, and, and the points that were made from members of the school committee was that the current policy, uh, really was very outdated, um, and something that was more general could be put into place. So a first tentat, a first draft, um, is in your packets. And again, it does take out, um, some of the specifics, uh, wearing hats, holding hats, et cetera. So it is much more, uh, general and modern. Um, it does state, for instance, that, um, what cannot, what students cannot wear. And again, it's, it's, uh, clothing that is discriminatory, obscene, drug or alcohol-related lewd, contains language or imagery that targets an individual group weapons, et cetera. So we try to make it, um, make more sense and also streamline it, um, again, as a first draft.
Questions or comments?
Okay, so, um, the first thing, and I know this is just a draft, so things that I would like to see changed with the draft are, um, one of our biggest things, right, is, from my perspective, is we don't enforce the dress code that we have today. Uh, so I'd really love to hear from our building leaders on what they think is feasible to enforce. Because I think that's been part of the problem over the years, is it's very challenging to enforce dress code for a number of reasons. Um, particularly with the proposed things, I think there are some positives in comparison to what we have today. I would really like some changes, though I think, uh, we have a minimum clothing requirement.
And actually, I was looking at that because that should be out. The, so this, we, there were a couple of drafts. This actually was recommended to come out by the committee, so you could cross this out.
The entire minimum clothing requirement?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, under what cannot be worn, um, there are not hats listed in there today as not being able to be worn. If we did allow them today, I think it has to be added that they can't be worn, or there's no policy there for hats. So my personal preference is that hats are not allowed in the school system to be worn unless it is a special reward day. We do funny hat days, you want to do a hat day as part of, like, um, spirit weeks at the high school, things like that. But on a daily basis, I do not think, uh, hats of any type should be worn unless there is some sort of medical reason or other requirement that, um, requires, uh, or allows the student to do so. Um, I do think, while I don't like there being minimum clothing requirements, there still has to be some requirement to the amount of coverage that is, that happens in the school. Um, I'll be very transparent, right? There is a lack of clothing on a lot of individuals in the school, and I do think that that needs to change. Um, so while I don't agree with the context that was used here, I do think there has to be something that, um, adds that information in, otherwise we don't have a dress code, right? So if we don't say that, you know, certain things need to be covered and that they need to be of either a certain length, or, or there has to be some sort of criteria in order to enforce it, so.
So certainly, we'll, um, not only bring that back, but, um, as you authorized at the last meeting of the committee system, so we are planning to meet again next week, in virtual, certainly with a school, I'll be taking your comments down, but I also want to make sure I invite any school committee members that would want to work on this. We're largely working virtually, um, as well. So we have talked, um, as generally a small group, about that enforcement, what some of our administrators are comfortable with and what was in there, uh, previously with certain types of straps, et cetera. To your point, it was not being enforced, and part of that was the discomfort, but also at the level of, you know, this, um, people's memories are a little bit different. So some feel that, um, make it more relaxed where that hats are actually okay, particularly post-COVID. Um, there are census security, so that's coming from some of our guidance counselors as well. So it is, as you know, very tricky to make one policy that will fit every situation. Um, but certainly, we know that the, that original policy is problematic.
Sure, great. I'd love to be part of that virtual meeting.
Would love to have you. And anyone else?
Other questions, comments? Okay. This is only a first reading, so I assume what you're going to do is you're going to have this group come back and, uh, bring this back to us as the first reading again, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was hoping, just because of the timeline and wanting even to get more input into this process. I'm hoping to bring this back for the twenty-first, however it comes back, perfect. Um, it can also be updated into not only our policies, but also the handbook.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, so on the twenty-first, that would be another first reading?
Yes, uh, the, the, the screen with the attorney, and basically, we don't need to do anything other than have them bring it back if it's a first reading. That way, it, the cycle or the process is still intact. It'll have some changes from this, uh, uh, group that works on it for that.
Okay.
What if, what if the handbooks released to the public?
Right.
Because it, it almost sounds like we're gonna have old policy information in the handbook sent out, and then a policy change that doesn't reflect. What's in the handbook?
So, um, so the handbooks are completely digital, so if we have it updated even as late as the twenty-first, we would be able to make the changes and have those out for students' first day for the twenty-sixth.
Right, but it's only a first reading, so we're gonna be voting on it?
We're voting on the what? You're talking about the, the dress code?
Correct.
Well, it's, if they're digital, you can do what most companies do, and they can say, these pages are reserved, and just leave them blank. The dress code says, it'll, it'll follow, because if it's digital, I mean, I could have a little time.
Sure, I don't disagree, it's just not how we want to start the school year.
No.
For that one, that, at least that's clear then. Otherwise, uh, you'd be, uh, you'd be putting out a, uh, like you just pointed out, you could put out a, uh, a manual that is not, um, uh, come right up to the last. you could put out a manual that is not, come right up to the last minute, maybe doesn't get voted on.
Sure. But we can send a separate communication that there's been a change to the policy and.
We would communicate it absolutely. And I think it might be even less problematic that we're going from a pretty restrictive, specific policy to I'm going to say is a little less restrictive versus the other way around.
I would not phrase it that way. That is not the goal, in my opinion. I don't know everybody else's opinion, but.
This seems more restrictive.
I don't like the wording of the current, I agree, but like when we talk about restrictions, we are super lenient today. So I wouldn't say we're being less restrictive with our policy. I think that's misleading for what my goal is.
In terms of the enforcement, in terms of the actual written policy, though, it is a much more specific restrictive policy. So I, yes, very different.
So you said this goes out on the twenty sixth?
The twenty sixth would be the first day of school for students.
And that's when the digital.
That's what the plan is.
And we are going to talk about it, but we have, we'll have a meeting on the twenty first potentially.
Pretend, yes.
And so if we throw it out at then and do it, well, that'll only be the first reading is what you're saying.
Yes.
Should we see?
And. You could have it as a second reading. I think the point that the chair was trying to get at is if there's going to be wholesale revisions. The whole point about the first and second reading is to digest all of that. But given the time constraints, you may want to consider just moving into a second, a second reading. So you can follow your bylaws and approve the policy. And it could still be adjusted that night.
Do we see anything in the future policy that would hurt parents going school shopping? Something that a parent's going to say, I just spent all this money on clothes and now you changed the policy on us? That's the only thing I would be nervous about, you know? Do we see anything that could impact parents from a budget standpoint?
I'll leave that question to people who have to dress, who have to shop for clothes.
I would hope that they don't have any offensive clothing. I think that's the biggest thing. Other than that is if it's covering their body, they should be in good shape.
If I may, I would suspect that's likely not going to be the case. Not, maybe in every single instance, but I think that the changes that are being proposed are not just like radically different from what you have. I think from what this discussion we've learned is that there may be an issue more around enforcement than it is around the policy. To say that the policy doesn't need to be updated, it certainly does. I don't think there's any radical changes in, well, I wear a certain type of shirt or pants and all of a sudden they've been banned.
Right.
I don't think we're going to be seeing.
So it could be something as simple as just communicating out that the policy will be, a dress code policy will be enforced this, yeah, this year with some revisions, but not, you know, like just so, just like the telephone policy, that was to some parents that were shopping, you know, but we did. So just something that I would be, I guess.
Further questions? If not, this is only a first reading. We do not need to go to anything on it. We'll let the committee do its work, come back as a second and we can look at it and hopefully go on something that night that is good. All right, we're going to move on to twenty two, discuss review of approved student handbooks. So.
Just so you know, the current handbooks are, were placed in the portal. The elementary handbooks are the only ones that have slight changes in there. So it still is a, I think a work in progress, but I did, you know, in terms of the timeline, I want to make sure they were available to you to make any comments. Again, because they are digital, we have additional time on those.
I personally, I'd like to motion to move this to the next meeting. I didn't have enough time to review the handbooks and I prefer to table this.
You, because we've got motion to tables in order, so.
Motion to table.
Need a second? Motion has been made to table this. It'll be the next meeting. So every date, then maybe. But you will discuss this in a few minutes. Any further questions? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. So that'll be tabled for our next meeting. Okay, item number twenty three, discuss review and approve purchases from the Fund Balance. A, classroom furniture, Virco Inc., Omni Ed contract, an amount not to exceed eighty three thousand eight hundred. B, teacher's desk, quantity two, C T and I S C rooms, Virco Inc., Omni Ed contract, an amount not to exceed one thousand seven hundred ninety two dollars forty four cents. And C, a cheerleading mat, dollar here, an amount not to exceed seven thousand three hundred seventy five dollars and seventy four cents.
So I wanted to bring this up to you. Last year, the school committee had authorized over four hundred thousand dollars for us to be able to purchase classroom furniture and some other equipment for the athletic field. We expended about two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars just to ensure we can, if we were purchasing, we can get them into the classrooms and also just keeping caution, especially with the construction project not starting. So because it is a new fiscal year, I wanted to come back to you and ask them, like, say, from that you better authorize, could we take almost ninety three thousand dollars out? We would be able to do, you know, another set of classroom furniture. Certainly Angelo and the crew are in the world language classrooms right now. Those are on the main hallway. They're being painted, ceiling tiles replaced. Those are the materials we have. Would like to be able to change out those desks so that we keep phasing those in. That is the first, if the furniture will match. In addition, with the new rooms, it seemed to make sense that there would be two new teacher desks. The ones that both culinary and the I C room are really very worn. I'd like to keep those for technology, the fence Dave, but the crew liked those old desks. So they could stay there in the bright shiny rooms. The teachers could have new desks as well, as well as the other furniture. Thirdly, this was a new request that came up from the cheerleading team. There's a new coach. Certainly was apprised by the A D that we really need some mats, mats that can be used all the time. This is a safety issue, but a better quality mat that should we go to, a more competitive than with people with the stunts that we do now. These, this mat in particular, and I did some price comparisons, this is a standard mat. We would be able to purchase this, have these for the team to be able to start working on. I think it's necessary.
Okay, questions?
I have a question. Could you just, I understand the CTE desks for I S C and the culinary room, the classroom furniture. So is this, like you said, we're just going through another couple of rooms? How many rooms are we able to furnish with the A D P's out?
So each, each desk is about three hundred dollars, Angelo?
Correct.
Yeah, and then each student's, and student shares about two hundred. So you're talking about for each student, about five hundred, you know, five hundred dollars. So we are looking at, first in line is the world history classroom. So we have that whole thing. The next area we're going is we're going to go upstairs to E L A classrooms as well. So this will cover both of those.
Just, just as a point of information, as last year we went through the math, we, this, this covers six classrooms.
That's us.
Yeah, I just did the math here. Pretty close.
And how many were there last year?
There were seven rooms last year.
Okay, so, and how many do we have total? You're just, how, how far are we in the process of trying to get every desk in the high school replaced?
If we continue on, we'll prob, right now, we'll probably have one, almost about a third of the school.
One third, right, and would that include?
That's after the sixth.
Includes this?
Yeah.
After this, we're one third.
That would be after the third portion for.
And this was all at S H S? Any at G M S?
Not at G M S. We will hopefully address that because we do need one floor, one, only one floor is new at G M S. They also need matching furniture for, I believe it's the first floor, David? Yes.
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade.
Yes.
These are all just general classroom desks or?
Correct. Better not, don't have the arm. So if you ever try to sit in one of the student desks that are in there, the kids don't fit. You don't fit in those. These are again separate. They're above sturdy quality. They'll, they'll last a long time and they look nice.
One other comment, just I've, I've heard really great feedback from parents and students about the cheerleading program. Over the past maybe five plus years, there have been some changes with previous administration moving cheer from being truly considered as a sport to a club and not by their choice. That was more administrative choice. So we have a new coach this year, as Dr. Barnes alluded to, and I've heard really good feedback from folks in the program that are really excited to see some, you know, some positivity being breathed back into the life of the program. And to Dr. Box's other point, they, while we do hope to, to have a competitive cheer team, right along the entire time as being considered a club, they were still stunting. You've seen them stunt at basketball games, football games, whatnot, and they were practicing this whole time about mats. So this, to the safety concern, it is a decent sized cost. So I just wanted to add some context. Thank you.
So now they can do it and drop each other and not get hurt.
Well, the hope is they still don't.
Okay, this will require a motion for all of these.
Motion to approve purchases from the Fund Balance A B and C.
Second.
Motion to be, any further questions? They're going to get rid of all the desks that have my initials up. Grave them then maybe, but who knows? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item twenty four, Boyle Committee update.
Angelo, thank you.
Good evening. Our last Boyle Committee meeting was held on June twenty sixth. At this meeting, the concession stand has received full certificate of occupancy. It's going to be all partial. We have full compliance with the fire department with our stationary system that's in place. We have a couple of punch list items that still remain. One of them, as far as the punch, even though we have been commissioned, I left the commissioning, there was some painting to be done on the outside of the building with some scratches that were not removed. And also I still have on the list the inadequate heating within the concession areas station. Even though it was per specification, it's still inadequate. So we have to be following fire resolution to that. They have delivered the close up documents to you. So they have, all our warranties are in place. All our commissioning is, is completed and the building is fully ready for occupancy, full occupancy at this time. And if there's any questions that the community may have, but this is just basically on the committee level.
How about the windscreen?
The windscreen. So I think that goes into one of the points I always wanted to bring to you. We can put it up. I'd really like to have the whole block with it come up when we have our opening day. So I did meet with the A D. So you will be the first to hear these dates. I'd like to, the, some members of the original Boyle Committee would like the opening day to be really focused on how great this project is, speeches have people there. So the only dates when we don't have competitive games that are coming in would be August twelfth, August thirteenth, or September seventeenth as potential. So I want you to see if you could look at your calendars and think any of those might be good. And I myself am leaning a little bit towards the September date because we'll have the students back in. But at least we know the field is clear. Not to say we couldn't bring in entertainment or something, but we know that we would have access to that for a ribbon cutting, you know, grand opening.
Okay, and so I agree. I think the seventeenth is more ideal. You want school to be in session and people not on vacation. And so you, you are saying you do not want to couple this with any other event that's already happening on the field?
Not necessarily that we don't, but sometimes it overlaps. So it might be doing the ribbon cutting and there's people coming, you know, coming in and out at that same time. So and you're in the midst of the game, whether it starts at four thirty. So for most of the committee members, starting, having an opening wouldn't be early afternoon. It would be after work, yeah.
Okay.
So that was why.
Like into the evening.
That's correct.
Do, do we have to have it be like a ribbon? I feel like people in the community, community are going to be like, a ribbon cutter, it's been open for.
A year.
A year? Like, could we switch it so it's like a party or a celebration or something? So it's not like the community, you know, up in arms about why are they having a ribbon cutting a year and a half after it's been paid on?
It's soft opening that we've had.
Really, there's something.
Field recognition? Are we dedicating the field? Like, you know, can we?
I don't think we're going to dedicate the field, but we're hoping to have the plaques with the original Boyle Committee on their membership as well as, you know, hopefully would like to have certainly speeches that are done and then we're open to what else might, might be happening. But it would be good to have this one commemoration, working with, certainly someone who's working with us for fundraising. But this might also be an opportunity for us to, one, sell bricks, sell advertising, to do some of the things that we've talked about, even with our T-shirts, so making an event that way. So it's another opportunity and we've got to market it in a way that the community would want to come out for this grand opening.
I, I always thought about it. It would be so much fun to have like a whole night for the Sentinel. Like, and just have Sentinel there, have merchandise there, have it completely, you know, sent out to the community about just what it is to be a Sentinel and like, that can be the old thing, like be a Sentinel. Like have the whole night just dedicated towards what it takes to be somebody who's in the field. And have it like, I, I think the community would love something positive and something like that. Yeah, I don't, it's an idea else.
So I think the agenda is really open right now. I think we can just. If I can get reference that the September seventeenth seems to work for you, then I'll put that across to the town tomorrow.
And everybody from the Boyle Committee, I'm sure there have been changes over the years because that thing has been going on.
The, the list of those who have been involved, yes, have been, yes, it's quite lengthy. Everyone will be invited.
Okay, anything further?
Yes. Sabriano, front and center, here we go.
Rose recently.
Speaking of an original member from the Boyle Committee.
An original, original, one of the, the oldest. There are two of us, myself.
Just say original. You don't have to do anything else.
Going back to a little bit of history, the first year, it was, the responsibility was with the school department. And I believe at that time I was with, as, as a chair with the school committee. But that time, the book, it was one full year and we had, we saw an awful lot of examples of the types of equipment and whatever materials would be used, obviously, because this material is used for the surface of the, of the.
Field.
Field. I'm going court and I go over that. But then from there, it then went to the town council and it became the committee for, for the town. And, and following that with the excitement, well, now we're really going to be moving ahead, COVID hits. And COVID did such a terrible job to so many different things. First of all, holding up equipment coming in and then the price going up. But for people to fully realize and understand that the tremendous amount of work it took on the part of everyone involved with the project to make sure that the prices stayed as what they were agreed to in the very beginning and being able to move, to move forward. That being said, now the opportunity for each of the different sports to be able to use the field this past year happened. But what we should have is where we had an actual cutting, not cutting, but shovel digging for the open, for the, the beginning of the project, to have the closure. You need to have a closure. And we did, the opening was at a four o'clock session that for the quote, for the seventeenth, it would be nice for the seventeenth to have at four o'clock, that be the official closing or the official dedication, whatever proper word you wanted to determine. And then if you wanted to have some special event for the Sentinel, that that followed a little bit later. But to have something separate that there has been the beginning and the end of the actual project. That really took an awful lot of time. And one very important thing about this is that it did not go out for bond. And so that the, we were able to make sure that this process and every aspect of being able to review and rebuild and make this a great athletic field came into play. And that includes the stands and the possibly the area for cooking or, or providing foods and services. And that's one of the last things that held things, things up. So that's my suggestion, as someone who's worked on this from the very beginning, that you take that into consideration and have the proper closing and the part, that ceremony that needs to take place. And then later you do the Sentinel. That, I think the Sentinel is important, but this, they're separate. They're two separate things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on Boyle? And if not, we are willing to move on to item.
Can I have a second?
Yes, you say aye.
September seventeenth is the open house, kind of what.
Is the open house what?
Old County Road.
Old County Road's open house?
Yes.
That's what, at night? Not the nighttime open house, right?
They, the open house should start at six o'clock. So depending on this, we can actually potentially do both.
Well, I, yeah, I think we just said though, that four o'clock would not be a good time to do the Boyle event because you, people can't get there after work to participate. And just, we can try to figure out the day. I think everybody's on board with doing something. I'm just gonna have to work out those details. Um, the one other comment I would have, and we can bring this up at the end, is further agenda items, but we still don't have, um, the Boyle field, um, advertising document and usage in place. And so that, to me, is a critical component of considering this closure. Uh, and so I just would like an update on that. We can put it on for, for next meeting, but we, we cannot delay that any longer.
So you'll have that. So in fact, there is a draft policy. I put it in the portal for the next meeting so that you can see that. We have someone, a group on board, and I think we're ready to go in terms of having those screens and everything ready. It just couldn't get them onto this agenda.
Thank you.
So, uh, we are now on to item twenty-five, discuss review and approve Stephen Turner Inc. invoices, invoice five nine five three for an amount not to exceed two thousand six hundred forty-three dollars and seventeen cents. Will require motion.
Motion to approve Stephen Turner Inc. invoice five nine five three for the amount not to exceed two thousand six hundred forty-three dollars and seventeen cents.
And a second.
Second.
Second. Uh, motion made second. Any further questions, comments? My only one, is this like our last bill?
Are we almost done?
Is this our last bill for them or, or what?
Angelo, this is the last of the bills. And we will.
Can't consider closure until we pay the bill.
Well, actually, we still have retained Green Acres Land Station in excess of one hundred dollars. So we still.
Now it's something being set aside until dropped.
So now we're getting close to that, but we still are going, you know, we still have retainage, but we still have a minor concern. So we're well above with the retainage on what it remains to be done.
So you, you'll finish the punch list and then at that point, the, whatever needs to be paid out. But it's mostly Green Acres, not Stephen Turner, or will he have?
Stephen Turner's commissioning, just the last bill, you see. There'll probably be one more small bill from the architect closing out after he reviews the final punch list.
Okay. So a motion is made seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Uh, twenty-six, discuss review and approve moving the August fourteenth school committee meeting to the August twenty-first, twenty-two thousand twenty-five school committee meeting.
So I'm just proposing this in terms of just giving us a little bit more time. It also brings us closer to the beginning of the school year. And the last year at that time, uh, we had the school committee meeting and I think we used that time to even recognize their teacher of the year or parent of the year. Um, to me, it, either way is fine, but just for, we're dealing with a lot of policies. It does give us, um, just a little breathing room.
So we already know we will be having the dress code come on. We already know the, uh, handbooks. We already know the field usage.
Yes.
So we'll have those three, and the twenty-first will, um, give you time to make sure we have at least all three of those. So, uh, this will require a motion because we are moving an existing meeting.
Motion to approve the moving, uh, August fourteenth school committee meeting to August twenty-first.
And a second. Second. Motion made second. Any further questions?
No concerns with the building committee approvals. I know we talked about the change order, less than ten thousand to give that ability, nothing else that we anticipate.
Yeah, right now, um, we got the things we had to do tonight. Um, something can always come up, but I mean, we're in pretty good shape there, uh, unless there's an emergency type thing.
Just transparency wise, we meet weekly for the building committee for these special projects. So that's why I'm asking, because we, we will have three meetings before the next school committee meeting. So I just, it would, no, we're, we're tight deadlines.
From a building standpoint, I don't know. Because we will have most of the, well, what do you call it? The preliminary will be done. The I S E, at least based on what we did tonight, things will be going on and, you know, will be, gives us time to put together the ramp, et cetera.
And that won't be.
What else?
I like how you planned. That's very good. So my, my main goal is to keep the she moving forward. So you're right. Uh, if everything goes well next week, the C T room or the floor covering will be put in place. Following that, we'll begin to install the appliances that we have already repurchased that are stored in the trailer on site and begin to rebuild that room. Uh, starting this Saturday, they should begin the floor covering in the, with the approval tonight. This will allow us to start the floor covering in the I S E room. Once those rooms are punched out with the cold base, we can start to move items from room one twenty-one into that area, simultaneously moving the I T department down to that area. So allow me three rooms of movement. The last room that we will occupy would be the life skills area, where the kitchen is located, but there's not a lot of furniture that is currently in one twenty-one in the life skills area because we are installing stove, refrigerator, et cetera, items as that. So it should be in shape as long as.
As far as moving parts go, right now, it looks pretty good. The thing that would throw us off is obviously something unforeseen.
Unforeseen.
Right.
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Got it. Okay, so we have a motion, uh, made in second to change the meeting date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Communications, copy of resignations, retirements, new hires in the district, a copy of the June two thousand twenty-five budget transfers. Superdental report, item twenty-eight.
Thank you. So I was just notified by the town manager, uh, just the other day, that, um, Governor McKee will be coming to Cho's Old County Road School on August nineteenth at four thirty, uh, in recognition of the programs that we do, um, outside of the school day through the Learn Three Sixty-Five Grant. Certainly these include a lot of the, um, enrichments, but also tutoring in math, uh, for our elementary students. So I want you to make sure to invite, and be able to get a follow-up email of invite you to that meeting. Principal, Dr. Contrada will be there as well as the batches and, um, asking families to attend. So the governor would like to have at least, uh, fourteen or fifteen families attend this, uh, recognition celebration that we're gonna hold at Old County Road School. Three sixty-five for A. For B, and as Lisa, if you would just talk about our C T E updates. So again, some very good news.
Um, well, I was asked to kind of dig into, is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, uh, to look at our, uh, C T funding from last year. There's a question, I think, uh, the chairman asked about, you know, how we were taking in tuition and paying out. Um, so fortunately, the Situate, um, situation by joining the consortium will bring that number down. There was an enclosure that had the, uh, C T E incoming tuition and what we were sending outgoing. So the, the good news from last year, it looks like we're on track for this year, is we're pretty much working even. So we're getting closer. We're not upside down, um, as the district has been in, in the past few years. So we're getting much closer to that. You can see in the, in the document, um, that last year for Situate, for example, we had two students coming in. So, um, there was, you know, that amount that will be saved between Situate and us and vice versa if we were to send to Situate. But this is a, a, you know, the, the folks from Johnston and Providence will see that there's two free, those are free produced lunch, um, students. So it changes the per pupil, um, cost a little bit because it is factored in, that we get a little bit more. So that per pupil average for Johnston and Providence isn't exactly what every kid, but that's the average when you take the number of students that, um, we have coming in. So Johnston, for example, are nine. We take in a hundred and fifty-one thousand in. So when you factor that in, it's about sixteen-eight if everyone was equal. But some are getting, we're getting more tuition for a couple of students, those two students, than the rest. So that's just the average per pupil. But if you're asked out in the community, what we, you know, spend and take in, um, that's about what we take in from different districts for C T E. And then further down, um, is what we're spending out. So Cranston, Johnston, what, you know, we're, we're paying to send students to those schools. And our numbers are looking pretty similar so far at this point, um, this year. There's an other tuition, um, that we do send, that comes into us at the top, um, is a, a special education. So we just, you know, do have some students that sometimes pay for special education services to come join us in a program if they don't offer that program. So we are able to do those arrangements with the other districts. Um, and likewise, other districts sometimes take in other students for programs. So that is a community that pays to send a student here, uh, to join in one of our programs. So that's kind of the overview. And then there was another document that's also in your packet that just shows what this coming year's rates are. Um, so in case you are asked, uh, what we are paying and taking in. And again, considering the consortium, you'll see what we would have been either paying to or taking out, um, for those other districts that were in the consortium. And just keeping in mind that we now have that five thousand dollars for all of those others. So, is there any, is there any questions there?
Any questions?
There'd be a, there'd be a great supporting document when you talk to town council about the hundred thousand dollar transfer and, uh, you know, the amount of time and dollars that go into this program. Absolutely.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, is that it? Consider mandatory report. Public forum? Nada. Okay. Uh, consider items to add to the agenda. We already know the field usage policy. Um, anything else?
Yeah, um.
Yes?
I think I brought it before, but just going back to it, is looking at, from an athletic standpoint, of looking at more of a breakdown based on, um, what we're spending per sport. Or just to see, I have a lot of, I get a lot of questions about that in the community of, you know, why does this sport get more than this sport? I just seeing more of a clear breakdown so we can, um, address those questions. And also looking at the jerseys and when, when we, um, replace them and like the, just the cycle, like the dates, just so we can see, um, when, again, when we get questions. Cause I, I get it a lot with, it's a, the so-and-so program, get new jerseys and this one didn't. So that would be super helpful.
Okay. I'd just like, um, I think it was last meeting, I'd just like to amend one that I made. I had mentioned the, uh, consulting about doing extra grant writing. Come to find out, Rosewood Consulting is already active and hired and just reading with the town. Um, I wasn't aware of that. So I, I think it's, they were discussing at the last town council meeting really like how there's a priority list that's set up. Um, just assuming that the school district hasn't received any grants over the past couple of years from Rosewood Consulting, because I think we know about it as well. So how do we work our way into that conversation when it comes to priorities?
So, so we are, we are not part of that, even though that is for the town. Rosewood, who I've met with the primary a couple of times over the past three years, um, does municipal projects. Um, they've not, they do not specialize in education projects. So the town pays, I believe, uh, between forty-five hundred and five thousand dollars a month, uh, to retain that. We were, um, we were quoted the same amount if we were to use them. So we receive no break from being part of that. The.
So the same consulting firm, but then just specialize, specializing in municipal projects and then there's another specialty of school projects.
Well, I think there's personnel in there that would. It really comes down to the dollars and cents and to be able to, um, pay fifty thousand dollars a year towards them.
Gotcha. So we'd be, we'd be paying that regardless of, uh, success on a, on the grants?
We'd be paying for it. And there's no guarantee, for instance, that we could take the fee out of any of the grant projects that we did. So I've talked with the town manager. Um, I talked with the last town manager, we've met with, uh, Rosewood itself. So there are some projects we could write yourself into it for a portion of that. But the town sometimes, uh, does not, certainly does not make a profit with these projects. So when we look at their expenditures, they're doing the grant writing, but there's always another cost. Um, at the very least, it's Rosewood's cost and then anything else to make the project complete.
Okay.
Speaking of the town, I think we heard from them, uh, and we had expressed that we wanted to have that next joint meeting. Have we gotten any closer to getting a date on the next, uh, joint meeting?
We have not, but I'm speaking with the town manager tomorrow. So we'll add that to the list.
Thank you.
Um, I do have one thing for school committee members. I got a communication, believe me, it's here somewhere, uh, from somebody from the town. Uh, there we go. Uh, it's regarding the charter commission. Uh, charter commission meets every periodically. Uh, and they generally interview, um, uh, various parts of government, okay? Uh, and they want to, uh, set up appointments on August eighteenth. That's beginning at six thirty, uh, for interviews. Now I sent a, a letter back. I told them, I let you all know about it. But I sent a letter back. I don't know if they want to do versus five, or if they want to do one person, then another person, another. So that's my request to them to find out if we're all together or not. Typically, it's all together. It's not individual. Or at least, we're by old guy, thanks, that's how they do it. Everybody come in and they talk to the school committee. And we could all pipe up or pipe down, or whatever we wanted to do, if they had specific questions. All right? So, but that's the date they're looking at, August eighteenth. The odds are it'll be at the senior center. What's that?
What is it for? What kind of question?
It's for the, um, charter review commission. And they'll, they'll talk to us and we can pipe up on the things in terms of if anything in the charter needs to be changed to help with schools.
Oh, okay.
You know, better functioning, et cetera. One, one part of the charter does deal with schools and the school committee. Um, it's pretty much about how we get elected and what the schools can do and things like that. Uh, what items they don't have to go into, uh, uh, competitive bidding for, and the, you know, education items, et cetera, uh, and things like that. But I mean, it would be that section of the charter for the most part.
Okay.
So, that's it. All right. And when I find out more, I will certainly let you know if it's all of us or if it's, like I said, five individuals. All right? All right, uh, that's it, I believe, there. So, uh, we now move on to consider vote on a motion to convene executive session pursuant to our island general laws forty-two dash forty-six dash five eight, matters pertaining to collective bargaining with local one two one seven, our island general laws, uh, forty-two dash forty-six dash five eight two, and review of executive session minutes of three twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, and July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, any person who will be discussing the executive session has been notified and given, and been given an opportunity to have that discussion heard in open session. The committee did not receive such requests. So this does require a motion.
Motion to move to executive session, second.
Motion made in second, individual vote. Uh, let's see, we'll start this thing with Mr. Mike. Hi, okay, myself, I, it's, uh, now we go with my guess. So, okay. If it's happened.
Hi.
All right, there we go. It's getting late. Uh, okay, that does it. We're all in here and, uh, that's it for this part of the meeting. Thank you.